Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 8th, 2025 Trinity County Planning Commission. Before we get started, I'd like to pledge allegiance, please. Thank you. I'd like to open it up to a public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the planning commission on any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Do we have any public comment in the room? Any public comment on Zoom? Okay, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna go with our regular calendar. Item A, Community Development, Planning, Approval of Minutes from the April 24th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Fall, Commissioner, fall. Thank you. Motion? Good. Yeah, thank you. So, item B. Vote, sorry, vote, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item B, Community Development Cannabis Conditional Use Permit for Micro Business Including Type 11 Distribution.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Drew Plabani, Cannabis Division Director. I'm gonna start off giving a brief background to the project. Essentially, in order to qualify for a micro business, there needs to be, currently, the way code is constructed, there needs to be a cultivation component. And so, at this location, the project was previously approved for 9,700 square feet of outdoor mature canopy. Then, following that, the project was approved for a micro business director's use permit, which included type six manufacturing, which is non-volatile manufacturing, cultivation, non-storefront retail, and type 13 distribution. If it's helpful to you all, at some point, I can kinda give my best attempt to clarify the difference between type 11 and type 13. But kinda, you know, going, going forward, we weren't exactly sure how to agendize this item, because if you look at the micro business code section, essentially, it establishes a threshold between director's use permit and conditional use permit. But it goes on to say that for each of the activities, they need to comply with essentially the standalone code section. So, if you look at the distribution code section, it's clear that a type 11 distributor needs to be done through a conditional use permit. So that's why you see this agendized as a micro business with the addition of the type 11 just, just distribution component. So, to try and clarify the difference between type 11 and type 13, their, type 13 is self- trans-, sorry, type 13 is a transport-only distribution license. There are two subtypes of type 13. Transportation-only and transportation-only self-transport. So, under a type 13 distribution license with the DCC, a type 13 distributor is allowed to move product between licensed cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution licenses. But the main difference between a type 13 and a type 11 is really that a type 13 is the distribution license type that allows for final form packages to be created and the COAs, which are required prior to moving it from distribution to retail, to occur at that distribution facility. So, a type 13 distributor who's doing trans-, transport-only, they cannot get the final COAs done, so they would need to take it to a type 11 distributor to have product packaged and/or at least the final COAs, because only a type 11 distributor under the state guidelines is allowed to have the lab come and take COAs, and I'll, I'll explain what that acronym is, Certificate of Analysis, which is required for any product before it goes to retail. So, that's a bit of background on the project, but as I said, we previously approved it as a DUP, and then because of the way code is constructed, we sort of, you know, reanalyze the project and then agendized it for, for you all tonight as a CUP. So, one thing I'll point out is that it may be more appropriate to make a modification to the resolution, because the resolution says approving a conditional use permit for a cannabis distribution facility. I think either way, the, the end effect is the same, but it, it might be more appropriate to just say that it's a CUP for micro business. Whatever you guys think is appropriate, I'm, I'm happy to make the change or not. So I, I think that kinda concludes my overview. If you have any technical or clarifying questions, of course, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you for your explanation. Do we have any technical questions for staff? Nope, thank you. Can we please hear from the appellant? Applicant? All right, long day.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Oh, there we go. Okay. I see why. Good evening, my name is Anna Wright, Flora. The applicants are here today and they will speak, I'm just gonna speak for a couple minutes. It's been a long time since I've been to one of these meetings, great to see everybody. Drew couldn't have said it better. This is a previously director's use permit approved micro business, and the main goal, the only goal tonight, is to change the type of distribution. It is extremely difficult for farmers in general to get to retail these days, I mean, at any point.
Could she just borrow yours for the public comment?
Well, yours reads, Drew?
I knew it, okay, that's better. To vertically integrate your business in the cannabis industry is the ultimate goal for absolute succeeding in this marketplace. That's what this licensee is doing. As Drew explained, excuse me, as the Director Plabani explained, you can't go directly to retail with just a transport-only or a self-transport distribution license. You have to go through somebody else who has that type 11, and that's extremely limited in our county, as well as the area. And so, for these applicants, this is the only thing that makes sense. They have worked with a local distributor in the past, they were able to get packaging started, and they'll speak more to that, and, and start making their contacts, clientele, if you will, and so they have already started to help people in this community by working with that local distributor. However, that relationship is ending, and it is time, well past time, for them to be able to start their own business, bring it in-house, and not only allow them to succeed, but allow all farmers in Trinity County that would like to utilize their services to succeed. Just one more quick point, the staff report is super clear in regards to there were no agency comments, all the findings are straightforward, zoning is applicable, and so I personally think this might be the most cut-and-dry distribution application you might see, especially because everything's existing. You're just going to add distribution activities to existing rooms and an existing building with the existing vehicles that were already used for transport-only. And I'll open it up for the applicants unless you have any questions for Flora I could answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm Lori Ann Curran, I'm one half of the team of applicants here. So, yeah, just to second what Anna said, we've been in cannabis for many years. My husband, Michael, born and raised here in Trinity County, he's been a part of the program since the beginning. So, we've been working for the last two years with, as you mentioned, with another distributor. We've established our own brand, so we created our own packaging, this is all like beautiful photos of Trinity County. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And we are in now 18 stores across California, which was kind of an accomplishment, it's pretty competitive out there, but, you know, we do, you know, grow good quality cannabis here in Trinity County, and we've been able to also help a number of other farmers package their brands and deliver it to retail locations, and also package local farmers for our brand and promoted it that way. So, we started small, but for us, it's really important to continue to be able to sell at the retail level, because there is that value added, it's just the vertical integration of being able to do it ourselves, and it's pretty untenable to deal with, you know, the thought of having to package in Humboldt, for instance, and then, you know, distribute from there, the associated costs and time and expense, so being able to do it on our own property that we own, where we have a nice facility, where we can employ, we have a number of, you know, local employees that we've established, so where we can employ some local people, provide good and safe compliant jobs in cannabis as well, is really important to us. So, yeah, thank you very much for considering our application, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much. You have a question for the applicant? Would you mind?
I think this is a great idea, definitely needed. My, my only question was, so with, and this might be Drew, so this director's use permit and the CUP limit it to six non-employee trips per week, is that right?
That does sound right to me, but I can pull up the code section if that's helpful.
I'm looking at the, the conditions of approval, but it was for the conditions of approval for the director's use permit, and I'm just trying to figure out if that still applies to the conditional use permit.
That's actually a great question. I would, and that's part of what I was trying to reference in terms of, you know, there's particular criteria for micro business, and then there's specific criteria for the type 11 distributor. So if I'm remembering correctly, that threshold is what distinguishes it between CUP and DUP. And so, that may be something that we need to clarify in the resolution that, and, and that might have some bearing on whether we're calling it a resolution for distribution or a resolution for micro business, because there are different criteria that are established in the micro business code section versus the distribution code section in terms of, is it a DUP, is it a CUP?
Yeah, cuz I'm concerned that, you know, during certain times of the year, six non-employee trips per year is not maybe gonna sustain the business, and so if, so would we have the opportunity under the CUP to increase that?
I, I think perhaps the applicant might be able to speak to kind of what their transportation plans are, but based on my recollection of all the details in the project, essentially, if they were to utilize their, the transportation element of their distribution to go and pick up product from licensed farms, then that would not be considered a non-employee trip. So I think that's as best as I can clarify it, but perhaps the applicant agent.
Good, yeah, I just wanted to make the point that the restrictions and the ordinance are on only DUP, and so there are certain employee hours that they can't go past, and then the trips, that's just director's use permit. But Drew makes a good point, a cultivator cannot take their product off their property unless they have one of the three levels of distribution. A distributor has to go get their product.
So, so a licensed grower can't take their products, cuz they can self-transport, so they can't-
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so they have to check a box on their cultivation license to say they're gonna self-transport, and they have to get a state license that says that.
But then, they can self-transport to the distribution-
To the distribution, if they do that. But from my experience, just from my experience with cultivators, not a lot of people do that, so most of the time, it's a distributor coming to the cultivator's facility to start the business transactions. But there are, there are cultivators that do have the ability, it's just from, again, my experience at Flora, there's not a lot that have that ability.
I just, I just didn't wanna put a, a crimp in things if we have the option not to do that.
Of course, of course, yeah. From, yeah, I can pull up the code real quick on the internet, but I know there's two restrictions of DUP, and those are the two.
Yeah, it says, you can't employ more than, this is the DUP, you can't employ more than three permanent full-time employees, and it does not generate more than two non-employee vehicles at any one time, or no more than six non-employee vehicles per week. And you've got the sign-in, sign-in sheet, so I realize you're tracking all that stuff, but, but I just, again, I'm just trying to figure out how that would actually work.
Absolutely, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other technical questions?
Yeah, and so just for clarity, we're working on the CUP for distribution, and that was the DUP for micro business, and so there is some vagueness if the DUP will transfer over to, regulations, stipulations will transfer over to the CUP of the distribution?
So, taking that all into account, I think it's probably more appropriate to refer to it as a CUP for micro business. And going forward, I think that, and obviously feel free to give me guidance in, in this regard, but I think that if we were to encounter this type of, you know, project scenario again in the future, that we would agendize it for a CUP under the micro business code section, and then just apply all of the required conditions from the distribution code section into the conditions of approval, and, and in retrospect, I think that, that's what I would do if, if I could do it over.
Okay, so for clarity, and I'm sorry, do those stipulations apply to this, or do they not?
In terms of the way that we've prepared the conditions of approval attached to the resolution, we have included all of the requirements of distribution, and then overlaid that with all of the pre-existing conditions of approval that were established for their director's use permit.
So, project number CDP 2419, conditions of approval, all those conditions apply?
Yes.
Okay.
However, to your point, Carol, the conditions may include some of those DUP-based limitations. So, I think that if we clearly call this a CUP for micro business, then that would clarify which conditions that were applied under the DUP code section that would no longer apply to a CUP for micro business.
That doesn't clarify it, because if you're saying, you're saying the conditional use permit for micro business includes the conditions of approval for the DUP?
The con-, the conditions of approval for the micro business include all of the conditions for full type 13, type 11 distribution.
So it doesn't include the DUP conditions?
So, in the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit, we say that all of the conditions that were established in the director's use permit would still apply.
That's what I just said, which, which would limit it to six non-employee vehicles per week.
Which is why I said that if we call it a conditional use permit for a micro business, then we would clarify that those conditions that came from being a DUP for micro business would no longer be applicable to the project because they've been granted a conditional use permit for my, for micro business. Are we saying the same thing?
No, not at all. And I don't wanna get these people into a bind somewhere down the road if some new person comes and they're reading this, and it says, okay, the, the conditions for the, in order to get your conditional use permit, you had to also comply with the conditions of approval for your DUP?
And what I guess I'm trying to clarify for you is that the conditions of approval for the DUP would be superseded by the conditions for the CUP and remove those thresholds that allowed for them to apply for a DUP for the micro business.
And where does it say that?
Where does it say?
Yeah.
Where does it say what?
Cuz the resolution.
So where, my, my attempt to resolve that, that potential conflict is it kind of in the top of Exhibit A, in bold and underlined, does the following conditions of approval include the relevant performance standards and regulations from Trinity County Code Section 17443B, and must be complied with for the life of the project permit and license? Additionally, all previously approved conditions for the micro business DUP must be complied with. My point is that if we approve them for a CUP, then the limitations imposed under the DUP would no longer apply.
So let me find, so Exhibit A, you just read and said that you had to comply with... So, right there it says additionally, all previously approved conditions for the micro business DUP must be complied with. So, but you're, you're saying you're not gonna hold them to the six trips per week?
Right, and I guess what I'm trying to clarify, and I apologize for the confusion, is that under the C, under a CUP for micro business, those trip limitations would no longer apply to the project, and therefore, in my opinion, wouldn't, would, would not be an applicable condition for the CUP.
But truly, that's not exactly what it says under, it, it, it very clearly says, all previously approved conditions for the micro business DUP must be complied with.
I'm, I'm be happy to take some notes and clarify that section of the resolution.
So what is the limitation for non-employee trips under type 11 distribution? Could we put that in there, and we could say except for, you know, whatever?
I'm assuming that's not the only regulation that is superseded, no longer applicable. I mean, so is there, in our staff report, are there the regulations for CUP distribution provided for us? Cuz I, I just went through 50 pages of regulations, and it sounds like this was for the DUP and not the CUP?
So, to clarify-
Not regulations, but this beautiful staff report.
In Exhibit A, all of the regulations and performance standards for a type 13, type 11 distribution license are established. In the attached staff report from the director's use permit, that covers all of the regulations under micro business DUP.
Right, which includes the limitation on the number of non-employee visits.
I, I follow your point. Let me know how you would like for me to correct it, and we'll do that.
Well, I, I thought I just suggested that earlier. If, so what is the limitation on non-employee visits with a type 11 distribution license?
So, those limitations that you're referring to are under the micro business code section. Those are not the same limitations that exist for a type 11 distributor. So the threshold between CUP and DUP for micro business are distinct from the threshold between CUP and DUP for a distribution license.
So what I'm trying to do is fix what you've said, so to add something like, all previously approved conditions for the micro business DUP must be complied with, except for the limitation on non-employee trips per week.
What if we added the word applicable?
Okay. Again, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that people don't get caught down the road going, wait, you said I had to apply. Somebody decides that there's too many people driving down High and Palm Road, cuz that's a, you know, kinda scary road, and so they object by saying, we don't wanna have so many non-employee trips, and maybe that's not realistic, cuz people, there aren't gonna be non-employee trips, but I'm just trying to prevent that issue in the future. So, yeah, all previously approved, comma, applicable conditions?
If that provides the-
Clarification?
Sure.
I mean, I suppose if we wanted further clarity, we could add an additional sentence or something that says, any condition that was established as a result of the thresholds for a micro business DUP are no longer applicable to this project approval, or, you know, something to that effect.
Well, I, I like the rest of the conditions, I was just kinda worried about that one in terms of, you know, trying to get enough, you know, baseline business.
I think applicable works.
Okay.
Any other clarification for staff? Commissioners? So, is there, is there an appellate for this? Is it a, no. So then, can we open it up to public comment? Please, any public comment in the room?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, Adrian Keas from Hayfork. I'm really excited by this project, I think this represents a lot of the core intent of what is now essentially a decade of ordinance development and business development in the county, and I think that the, the applicants themselves represent that, that core intent also. I am hopeful to see this business really thrive, it is everything that both the, the consultant and the applicant have said it are just absolutely spot-on. The difficulty in getting our product to the shelves at a rate that we can afford to live on is, is predicated by, by completing our supply chain locally. I'm in the process of launching another local brand. Without this facility's assistance, I'm literally sending product to Santa Ana and having it sent back, because we don't have any facilities that we can work with. And just all the, all the various obstacles are thrown out. One of them is the self-transport license that was discussed a little bit about, you know, would that be a non-employee trip to the facility? That license requires the same commercial bonding of, that $2 million bond that, that full distribution requires also, so that's just this other, just like insurmountable hurdle for a small farmer, when we already have to pay our surety bond for cultivation, we pay our surety bond for the tax. If we wanted to get the most basic license, where we are literally only transporting our own material to a distributor, we still need to carry a $2 million bond. So, when that gets centralized, and that business is centralized, it, it takes that weight off of the other businesses. These folks are willing to stand up and carry that weight for us, and so I really hope this can be passed, and I wish them the best of luck, thank you. And so I really hope that this can be passed, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment in the room?
Name's Eric DeRoche, uh, Weeville. I'm the owner-operator Trinity's farm. I'm here to encourage you to please pass this permit. As a farmer, it's definitely very helpful for us to succeed in this crazy climate of the cannabis industry. And this will be one step closer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comment in the room?
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Lisa Wright-Lewiston. Just really to echo what's been said here already, and that is the importance of the vertical integration really for success in business here. I think you can bring it right into reality with packaging and, um, you know, designs. Lori has spent, I don't know, countless hours going into retail to secure shelf space. There's so much work involved now to try to make a profit. And really, you know, bringing to market in, in turkey bags, bulk commodity is really not sustainable for farms. So they really need to go through a value-add process. Anything they can do in that vertical integration is so important. I'm on a National Cannabis Industry Association cultivation committee. And literally everyone that I speak to on that national scale has some form of value-add vertical integration to just survive, uh, in the marketplace these days. So this is a really important addition to our community, um, as well. You've heard people say that, you know, that difficulty. We have a lot of people who have experienced horrible stories really with distributors from the coast and other places where they've sent product and it like disappears. Or they don't get, you know, they don't get paid, they don't, or they get, get sent back to them as brown dust. And there's some really kind of horror stories there. So to bring it here home and keep it here, I think is, is really advantageous. Also, from a taxation perspective, I believe there's some additional benefit to having that piece, more of that piece here than we do, um, currently. Um, and then finally, just a comment on the self-transport distro only. We have, so Flo probably has around two hundred some licensed Trinity cultivators that we service. And of that, less than five have their own self-transport. I happen to be one of them, and it is very costly. I've maintained it even though I haven't been operational just to keep it. But you have insurance, general liability, the bonds, it's, and it's, uh, it's an expensive venture. Even though it's just a checkbox on your Trinity license, you still have to have and maintain that DCC. So, you know, in terms of trips in and farmers bringing things, that's just, you're not going to really see that happening. So I urge you to approve this as a conditional use permit for a micro business. I think that would eliminate some of the issues that have been presented with restrictions in the DUP. I think they've fulfilled all of the, um, components required. The Appendix C, the Sequo document analysis scoped in every particular license type as well. So that's already all been addressed from an environmental perspective and found to be, um, solid too. So I would think the CUP for micro business would be the easiest route to go to approve this for full licensing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment in the room?
Hi, for all you, uh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for all you. Today I'm here because, uh, I got a notice. So, um, we had a conference today. So I hear today before I say something. My English really poor, so you laughing me is okay. So you don't understand, just telling me repeat. So today I'm here because, um, I got it, I got here, I got the letter over here that the neighbor grow really close to my face, not more than three hundred feet. But also, um, my survey coming to survey the property. My neighbor, the grower, also growing my property, so.
I don't, I don't believe this is the right venue for what you're trying to do. You have to have your item agendized to, to come and talk.
Okay.
Right now, the opportunity is to talk about the, the business we're talking about. You will have to get your item agendized to, to represent.
If, if I may.
Yes, please.
I've, I've had a conversation, um, previously about this dynamic that he's referring to. And so, and correct me if I'm, you know, not telling them what, what you're trying to tell them. But he, he owns an adjacent piece of property. And as I think we're all aware, Parcel Viewer has some significant limitations and inconsistencies in terms of where parcel lines are plotted. He came to the office in the last couple of months and had some questions about how Parcel Viewer plots their property lines. Because he, his property is across Hayford Creek, but the property line comes across Hayford Creek onto the north side of Hayford Creek. Um, and so it looks like the part of the outdoor garden that is closest to Hayford Creek on Parcel Viewer, it looks like it is on his parcel. So I encourage him to hire a surveyor to determine this. I've had previous discussions about this when, with the applicant for this micro business when we were approving the cultivation license. Because it's one of the few cultivation licenses, um, for, you know, that has an outdoor mature canopy component that's within the hundred-year floodplain. And so we took a very close look at that area of their cultivation. And I had some similar questions where it looks like from Parcel Viewer that the property line splits part of that garden. And so my recollection of those discussions was that, um, Mr. Curran clarified to me that it had been previously surveyed and there was a survey marker that indicates that the entirety of that small section of their outdoor cultivation that is, you know, down by the creek is on their parcel. So I think that's his concern, that he's, you know, that dynamic or that, that, that's what he's trying to convey. I'm not sure if he's opposed to the project on that basis or is in support or just wants to bring that to your attention, but if that helps to clarify kind of what he's communicating about.
It does, thank you.
Sorry, Your Honor, so.
No, no, no problem. So are you opposing the project or supporting the project?
I don't know what to say, but I think that is, uh, because I don't know much about the regulation. I just moved down Hayford last June. I can't answer exactly, so that's why I'm here.
No, thank you, thank you.
If, if I could add additionally, um, you know, i- if he does decide to get it surveyed and somehow that's in conflict with the information that we have previously received, I don't think that has any bearing on the micro business component. But that might create the instance where some portion of that very small area for outdoor cultivation that's nearby the creek would have to be removed if it's found to not be on, you know, the subject parcel. But as it relates to approving this for the CUP for micro business, I, I don't think it has any bearing in, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment in the room?
I'm an applicant, um, lifelong resident of Trinity County. Just want to say thank you guys for the opportunity here as well. But, um, I had spoken with, um, the Director Drew previously about this. The license, when I purchased it in two thousand and twenty-one, that was one of the original micro businesses, but it was also license number ten. And so initially Kevin Manassian and his wife Shanna, who had applied for this, their neighbors, they had a conflict because there was a bus stop. And, and the neighbors said, hey, we don't want you being over here because it was within the variant zone. So they couldn't be up in the upper yard. So, because that was close to the bus stop, which is no longer in use. So hence why they ended up being in the lower floodplain where this garden is. And in order to place it where they did, they had it surveyed. There are mark, there is a marker. They specifically, because this is one of the first ones that the county went through with this. Yes, it is in the floodplain, um, but it is also thirty feet off of the, whoever, whomever just came up here, his parcel. And so I know this has, doesn't have anything to do with as far as like the CUP, all that. But just to clarify, it's very specifically was previously outlined, surveyed. County was out there and said, okay, this is where we're actually going to put this garden. Because other than that, they weren't going to be able to have cultivation on the ten and a half acres that are there, so.
Thank you for clarification. Any other public comment in the room?
Evening Commissioners, uh, John Brower from Junction City. Like to welcome Commissioner McIntosh, uh, back to the party. And, uh, and also compliment staff on a good staff report. And, uh, want to encourage approval of this project. It can, uh, can definitely, uh, add to and, and support the, the efforts of our small cultivators here in Trinity. As the state has rolled out the, uh, transition to the regulated market, it has created a mess. And the statewide supply chain, uh, issues are many and, uh, and severe. So, um, I think what the applicants, uh, are trying to do is commendable and, um, they should get, uh, maximum support. County, uh, it seems absolutely appropriate land use-wise. And, uh, both the spirit and the letter of the, uh, the ordinance. I wish them luck. So please approve this project.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comment in the room?
Hello, uh, Commission, uh, Matthew Jefferson, Trinity Center. Owner-operator, Trinity Ops Canacraft and, uh, spare time farm and nursery too. We love the staff report. We just hope you can support and approve this project. Also want to welcome you back Duncan. I don't really have much to say, just that I hope you can support this beautiful family and support the prosperity of their farm and their business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment in the room?
Hello, Commission, Dana Hauser from Hayfork. I'm here in support of this project as the President of the Hayfork Chamber of Commerce. It, and I'm also neighbors. And I'm really looking forward to this project being approved. For many reasons, but in the context of promoting Hayfork and, and Trinity County and with the aspect, within the aspect of cannabis tourism and having our craft brands be able to hit market locally in a, just promotes our way of living and our culture of farm to table. Like the whole concept of craft, it embodies it and it makes me excited to be here tonight. And, um, it's just been a long time coming. And I'm not even part of the project, so I can't even imagine what it must feel like. And I'm really looking forward to it and promoting Hayfork and Trinity County. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comment in the room? Any comment on Zoom?
Yes, we have Jeff G.
Hi, Jeff Goodella, um, Xenia. Um, I'd just like to, um, echo what everybody else is saying. This is the type of business that Trinity County desperately needs. And these are the people, um, that, the type of people that we need running these businesses in Trinity County. So please, please support this and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have Rhoda.
Hi, uh, this is Rhoda Kane from Trinity Center. I am just so grateful that the county has moved forward with, uh, finding a way to allow the micro businesses to happen. It's just, I'm just so grateful. I don't fully understand why the trip limitation matters. But non-employee trips to a distribution facility are, you know, pretty rare thing. But, um, I'd just like to say that if, if this, this particular micro business license passes, if it's approved, would be a game changer for craft cultivators in Trinity County. As some of us might actually survive. And so I guess I would just ask that you approve this. And then also, I think it's important to think about, what Director Poblani has been saying about making the, uh, corrections to the resolution so that, um, it simplifies all this in the future. And, uh, I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comments on Zoom?
We have Vedat. Vedat?
I'm here. There we go. Um, good evening, everyone. Vedat VanderWijde from Lewiston. I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to respond to, uh, an, an observation that I had when I was in the, uh, on staff, the cannabis division and working there, the, on these meetings. A lot of the times when there was confusion or when there is confusion on the vote, there, it, it ends up being administratively extremely hard on the backend to figure out what, what's all going on. This is a very convoluted thing. Whenever Director Poblani says, he said, because of the way the code is constructed, it means there's a lot of confusion. I would highly, highly recommend that you just simply stick with staff recommendation. To add on to the more, um, personal aspects of, of this, I'm now on another side of a counter at a dispensary and I get to talk to the public that are coming here to get Trinity County cannabis. They are coming here and coming through this dispensary to find exactly what we are trying to get to move through not only this county a little bit easier, but to then open up the future for Trinity County to keep expanding outside when everything is, is succinctly put together here. We have to let staff do what they're, what, what they're doing here and giving this farmer a distribution license. We need these farmers to have this avenue so that we can get more than two Trinity County cannabis farmers on the shelf in this dispensary right here in town. We have more Humboldt, we have more Mendocino County than we have Trinity County. Do you know how embarrassing it is to say, yeah, we only have two people here from Trinity County? This is when we open up the opportunity to fill our shelves with the very licensees who spend a ton of time, energy and money and passion to get those, their flower, their sacred flower into a package. So give them a chance to get on the, on the shelves, at least here in Trinity County. So please just simply let the staff do what they know how to do. And just vote based on their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other public comment, or sorry, comment on Zoom?
Yes, Tom Blanco.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. Bottom line up front, yes, pass, please, this, uh, CUP this evening. Uh, I think it's an, it, it's as close to a no-brainer as we get. That said, uh, I think the notion of the CUP distribution to add on to the micro business is, is, you know, this monster that Trinity County has created. And I don't mean any of the people on the dais or in the chairs because none of you were there when this happened. But micro business was originally designed to streamline multiple uses with certain limitations. Then sometime in our infinite wisdom, it was deemed we need a CUP for the various uses. So now a micro business is the most complex license you can get in Trinity County instead of the most streamlined. So with that said, since we put them through the process of a distribution CUP, they should get a distribution CUP. Which is to say, it's subject to all the opportunities that a type eleven CUP affords. I don't mean that you should delay the issuance of this CUP by any means. I also don't think that we should limit it by conditions that might have been appropriate for a DUP. I also don't think that we should limit it by conditions that might have been appropriate for a DUP that we could say, oh, the discretionary level for that is the director, not the commission. They've come to the commission, you have a staff report worthy of the commission's review. This should be a full distribution permit. Either way, I very much hope you pass this this evening. There's no opposition. It's a great idea. It's a great location. They're great folks. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comments on Zoom?
No further comment.
Thank you. Like to close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for a motion and discussion. Commissioners?
Sorry, I move that pursuant to state SEQUA guidelines, the planning commission make the following environmental findings. On the basis of the project description, findings and facts detailed in the staff report and all comments received, that the proposed commercial cannabis project would not have potential significant impacts on the environment. The proposed project falls within the Trinity County Cannabis Program EIR Schedule 2018-122049 and approve the conditional use permit CP 2501 based on the recommended, recommended findings in PC Resolution 202508. And subject to the conditions of approval set forth in Exhibit A to PC Resolution 202508 with the addition of the word, sorry, the insertion of the word applicable between approved and conditions in paragraph three of Exhibit A.
I'll second that.
So we have a first and a second. Do we have discussion? No discussion. Do we want to vote?
Okay, Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Harper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations. Like to move on to reports and announcements. Any planning commissioner reports?
Well, I'll make an announcement for Commissioner Flights. She and Eric are the proud parents of new baby William Allen Flights. Home and doing well.
Congratulations, Commissioner Flights. Any other planning commissioner reports? Do we have a Deputy Director of Community Development report?
Commissioner Fall, you stole my thunder.
Sorry. I got pictures though.
I did too, and that's what I was just wanting to share. It's a great thing when we're going through all this together and we get to not have a planning commissioner here, but know of the good things that did happen this week. And so congratulations to her and her hubby and the little baby. They looked very well and happy in the pictures that I saw. So that being said, we had seven interviews this afternoon because I'm sure everybody's aware today was Bellows' last day. So we were able to coincide and have seven interviews today and they're very promising. And we're going to be moving to second interviews. Hopefully we can get them set up for next week. But that's really, that's really all I have. I just wanted you guys to know that good news because that is good news. We had seven, we had masters level planners that interviewed today. So it's very, very encouraging. So hopefully they can come out for the in-person interview. And we'll get somebody in the seat.
That sounds great. Thank you for the information, Deputy Director Brisley. If there's nothing else, meeting's adjourned.